We're ready.
Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks by Council Member Pauls.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. I'm going to speak just a little bit about one of the individuals standing up here. It's by the name of Vinnie Palermo. Two weeks ago, he invited me to attend a ballgame in South Omaha on 36 and Q. And all I heard in the crowd was, "Vinnie, Vinnie, Vinnie." I got tired of it. I would say, "He rich is here, too." But I didn't. But anyway, he invited several of us to be there, and I think some people were there at the time, part of the day. It was sort of a pace ballgame for the kids that I think the police are very involved in, correct? And Vinnie was up there, and he was the coach. And I mean, man, you talk about a tenacious person. But anyway, he did treat everybody well. But he also had, what I thought was pretty nice about it is because both of these teams have played each other in the past. I think one had beaten the other one. And today, it was a pretty tight game. Vinnie was sweating, of course. But he had also, at this function, he had also invited what I call two Republicans, myself being one, and Congressman Bacon.
Bacon.
Bacon? Just want to make sure you're listening to me. And then he invited a couple Dems, which he is, and then Mike Boyle.
Boyle. I hope they don't get harder.
Well, we're trying to make this a little light. But anyway, we laughed, had a good time, the game is over, and everybody's yelling, saying great things. And you know, when I played ball many, many years ago, and when you have politicians together, oh, and by the way, his team did win the championship. Is that not true?
I was hoping you didn't forget that part.
And the reason why, because he has a young daughter, and I know he's going to retire young if she turns pro. Because he'll, you know, he's going to live off his daughter's life. That's what I mean. Well, anyway, what I thought was interesting, you had both teams there really wanting to win, and you had four politicians there. And when I was younger, this is what I would hear. But I heard no trash talk that day. Sort of setting up, I guess, what are we going to talk about today?
Trash.
Oh, took my line. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the City Council. We thank you for joining us. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask you, please turn off or silence your cellphones. At this time, we have a proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you know, tomorrow and later on this week, most of our young people will be going back to school. And this proclamation recognizes a national as well as a local group that has been sponsoring the Million Fathers March for several years now. And I would like to ask Mr. Willie Hamilton with Black Men United to come to the podium, please, while we read this proclamation and present it to him for the Million Fathers March, which is going to be tomorrow at eight, eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen tomorrow. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas on this first day of school 2019-2020, families, teachers, and students set goals for achievement and attendance; and whereas fathers are our children's first teacher and set the example for economic academic success and love of learning; and whereas research has demonstrated that even from birth, children who have an engaged father are more likely to be emotionally secure, confident to explore their surroundings, and as they grow old, have better social connections; and whereas, when fathers are actively engaged, children are less vulnerable to the risk of childhood poverty, mental illness, juvenile delinquency, youth sexual activity, teenage pregnancy, substance abuse, and failure to complete high school; and whereas fathers, father engagement and parent education programs help fathers gain parental skills and economic self-sufficiency, being parenting leading to better students, better schools, and better communities. And whereas, on behalf of the Omaha citizens, we thank Black Men United for local sponsorship of an event that raises awareness of the importance of fathers playing a positive role in their children's education. Now therefore, we, the City Council, the City of Omaha, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, August 14, 2019, as Million Father March Day in Omaha."
Address, 4200 North 30th Street. That's where my office is located, but I'm actually a resident of South Omaha. 5009 A Street, Department 3.
And we know you're Willie, but you have to tell the clerk.
My name is Willie Hamilton. And I want to thank you again for acknowledging the work that we do. This is our 13th year, and we have recognized that fathers play a very important role. And we know that when a father is actively engaged in a child's education, Congressman Gray alluded to everything, education problems goes down, gang problems goes down, sexual proudness goes down. So we want to make sure that we acknowledge our fathers and the role that they play. And also, I just want to thank you again for acknowledging the work that we do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Items 6 to 8 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Chestnut Hills, located northwest of Kilpatrick Parkway and State Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 6, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R4 District, high density. Item 7, a resolution to approve the final plat for Chestnut Hills. Item 8, a resolution to approve the Chestnut Hills subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items 6 through 8 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Members of the Council, John Bachman, 10250 Regency Circle. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and will answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray.
Oh, I'm sorry. I left it on. I meant to turn it off.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 6 through 8 are approved, seven to zero. Items 9 and 10 relate to the same project and can be considered together for the Villas of Piney Creek, located east of 204th Street and north of Blondo Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 9, a resolution to approve the final plat for the Villas of Piney Creek. Item 10, a resolution to approve the Villas of Piney Creek subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items 9 and 10 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon, Members of the Council, Kyle Bull, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. This is the second phase, Project 68, single-family villa lots, and be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 9 and 10 are approved, seven to zero. Item 11, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Millworth Commons, located northeast of 14th and Nicholas Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 11 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Kendra Ringenberg, 9500 West Dodge Road, Suite 100. I'm here on behalf of the developer. I also have representatives from the developer here, Paul Smith and Keith Weeces, and Katie Underwood from Olson. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Item 12, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Lighthouse Bar and Grill located at 2505 South 132nd Street.
The public hearing on item 12 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon, my name is Furok Kragimov, and I'm here. My address is 4751 South 96th Street, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Item 14, an application to consider in addition to the Arboretum's Class I liquor license located at 8141 Farnham Drive to add an area approximately 25 feet by 44 feet and an outdoor area approximately 46 feet by 43 feet to the east.
The public hearing on item 14 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Councilmember David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street. Here on behalf of the applicant, representatives of the applicant are here as well. This is in addition to an existing liquor license to match an expansion of the licensed premises, which is the dining room and patio area at the Arboretum Independent Living Facility. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the City Council, rules of order.
Public hearings on items, agenda items 15 through 17, were held July 30, 2019. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 15 through 17 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 18 through 28 are today. If you wish to address the Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item or items you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. We will be removing item 24. Going once, twice.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I am an opponent of item number 25. Is that still on the agenda?
Okay.
I think the public needs to have more discussion and explanation about these programs. I don't, I read the paper every day, and I don't recall hearing anything about the home program funds for rehabilitation and resale, eventual purchase and sale, qualifying low-income people that are at least at or below 80% of the median income, et cetera, $660,000. Somehow that involves my property taxes, I would think. There were some city taxes somewhere along the line. And I think if we look very simply at it, comic book style fashion that may be, that seems to me like that puts some people at an advantage over other people. It doesn't say that these people that are doing this have real estate licenses, but it raises some questions. Is, for example, is the Omaha Land Bank involved? What exactly is the Omaha Land Bank? If you go to the websites and look things up, it's a municipal organization. Special Omaha Municipal Land Bank meeting called for August 12, 1890.
Larry. I need to interrupt you. You're off topic.
That's on the third floor, coming up.
You're off topic.
Now, if you go a little further.
Larry, you're out of order.
Community Development Division.
Come back on topic, or we're going to have to declare you out of order and have you removed.
All right. Okay, well, if you look up Omaha Land Bank, there are members of the council that are involved in it.
Please take a seat.
We'd like to have more openness about that. Thank you.
Are there any, anyone else wishing to testify as a proponent or opponent on the consent agenda resolutions? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 29, an ordinance authorizing and directing an issue as additional bonds for the sanitary sewage system revenue refunding bond, Series 2019, in an aggregate principal amount of $23,500,000, is an amendment of the whole request by the Finance Department.
Mr. Motion.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. One public hearing will be held for items 30 and 31. Agreements with Heartland Workforce Solutions, the Greater Omaha Workforce Development Area Provider, National Able Network, and Dynamic Educational Systems for programs at the Greater Omaha Workforce Development Area, one-stop center in the amounts of $2,800,000 and $1,275,000.
The public hearing on item 30 and item 31 begins at this time. Is there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Erin Porterfield, 5752, aims available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. No motion. Just.
Item 32, an ordinance to approve the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Fiscal Year 2019 Office of Violence Prevention Grant Program in the amount of $35,000 from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, to provide funding for human DNA testing.
The public hearing on item 32 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 33, an ordinance to...
Who?
Is this a waste ordinance?
No, not yet.
Oh, okay.
We'll get there.
Thank you.
Did you sign in?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Item 33, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Douglas County in the amount of $6,923 and authorized funding from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2018 School Violence Prevention Program to provide funding for the travel of three employees to the Association of Threat Assessment Professionals Conference in 2019 and 2020.
The public hearing on item 33 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
One public hearing will be held for items 34 and 35. Item 34, an ordinance awarding a contract to FCC Environmental for the Omaha Solid Waste Collections Contract for the years 2021 to 2030, with an estimated annual cost of $22,691,046. A is communication from Mayor Gene Stothart, B is communication from the Public Works Director, C is an amendment of the whole for FCC three-cart system, D is an amendment of the whole for West Central Sanitation two-cart system, E is an amendment of the whole for West Central Sanitation three-cart system, F is communication in opposition. Item 35, an ordinance to amend Section 33-46 to change the number of permanent inhabitants needed in a single unit to exceed the established solid waste limit from eight to five.
So before we begin the public hearing, I just have an announcement that there was a sign-in sheet process. If you wish to testify on these items during the public hearing, so if you have not signed in and wish to testify, please see the clerk, and they'll make sure that you sign in on the right side of the issue, depending upon what your perspective is. Item 34 is the contract recommendation for FCC, so we'll begin with the Public Works Department and Mr. Tyler on that, and then we'll go to proponents and those who have signed in. So if Mr. Brazil could be ready in the, on deck.
Okay. Thank you. Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works. I'm the Assistant Director for Environmental Services, and I've been asked to say a few words on behalf of Public Works. I have a prepared statement. I will submit that to the clerk when finished. The Public Works Department strongly recommends the award of this contract to FCC Environmental. We support the mayor's recommendation, which is to award this contract to FCC Environmental and to award bid alternate 3A, the two-cart co-mingled with biructally recycling. To quote a few statements from the mayor, taken from the op-ed that appeared in the most recent Sunday World Herald, "The council's decision will impact every Omaha taxpayer for the next 10 to 20 years. Our objective must always be to collect your trash, yard waste, and recyclables on the day of scheduled collection. And when solid waste is not collected in a safe and timely way, public health and public safety are impacted." And I want to reemphasize that, and what I see is the most important point, public health and public safety are impacted. This contract is about public health and sanitation. This is about making sure we hire the company that demonstrated to the working group and our outside consultant that their bid provided for the adequate number of resources to perform this duty under all conditions. The Omaha Public Works Department, as part of its duties for the City of Omaha, provides for the safe disposal and collection of wastes that are generated by our residents in order to protect public health. If you flush your toilet, if you set out your garbage, the Public Works Department either contracts for or provides for the safe collection and disposal of that waste in accordance with all environmental rules and regulations. Garbage, when left uncollected, can lead to diseases that are common in third-world countries. You may think this can't happen in the United States. We're too advanced as a society to do that, have this happen. It's happening this year in Los Angeles. The Public Works Department is not in a position to recommend a company that may or may not be able to provide the services necessary to meet the responsibility of protecting public health and sanitation of our residents. We must recommend the company that we know will deliver this essential service all of the time, under all conditions. Our outside consultant, SCS Engineering, who does this work all over the country, recommended FCC as the best, most responsible bid received. The five-member working group that reviewed all of the information contained in the four bids came to the same conclusion. This group included members of the Public Works Department, represented from the Finance Department, and a retired city attorney. Meetings were held over a period of weeks to come to this recommendation. This was not a split decision. It was a consensus recommendation that we made to Director Bob Stube, who in turn passed this recommendation to the mayor. I want to add a few notes about the prices and proposed level of resources required to do the work that we received from the four bidders. And I know you've all heard these numbers before, but I just want to say these one more time to reemphasize what we saw and why we made the recommendations we made. Our consultant, SCS Engineering, developed a cost model for each alternate in the bid documents. Their model also estimated the number of trucks required to do that work. SCS's estimate for this alternate was $24,700,000, with 51 trucks to do that work. Three of these bidders, FCC, Waste Connections, and Waste Management, were within 20% of this estimate and had operational plans that assumed more trucks than the SCS model. FCC came in at 8% below that estimate, with 59 trucks to do the work. Waste Connections came in within 1% of that modeled estimate, with 65 trucks to do the work. We may think that may have been an error, their number may have been closer to what the model predicted. Waste Management, the current provider, came in at 18.2% above the estimate, with 53 trucks to do the work. Public Works believes that the bids received from these three bidders, along with their comparison to the estimated cost for the work by our consultant, gave us a good indicator of what the value of this contract should be. This is in addition to our understanding of costs from our peer communities in a recent bid for the City of Bellevue, Nebraska. All of this data indicated to us what the market value of this contract should be. These numbers showed us that the bid provided by FCC was reasonable and provided more than an adequate number of resources to perform the work. It was close, but on the low end of what the information told us, we should be paying for this work. WCS bid for the work, 36.9% below the estimate of our consultant, and nearly 40% below the average of the other bidders. They have proposed to do this work with 40 trucks. This is a fleet size that is 20% below what the consultant estimated, and 25% less than what was proposed by our current provider. Mr. Don Williamson, owner of WCS, who I respect greatly, has stated that they have shown as a company that they are able to come in 20% less than the big national companies. We may have been able to look at them at 20% below, but not at 40% below. The numbers, no matter what you believe about the use of technology and automation, show us that the bid received from WCS did not provide for the adequate resource to perform the contract. Taking a close look at the number of resources that they added into the yard waste bid, that along with the numbers I previously provided, validates our belief that the bids from WCS for this and all other alternatives did not provide for adequate resources to serve the Concerns have been raised by council members on the level of service with the two-cart co-mingled alternate. In response before you today is the modification to the code to provide free additional capacity to residential households having five or more inhabitants. Based on data received from metro area planning, Public Works will budget up to $1 million to cover this additional capacity. We believe, based on participation from the pilot study, the cost will be closer to about $250,000. Some of the other things I have in my prepared statement have more to do with how this contract works with the yard waste contract. I'll hold those comments, and they'll be provided in my written testimony.
You'll be around for questions.
I'll be available for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tyler. At this time, we call Mr. Brazil. Next up is Laura Hubbard.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, fellow members of the council, Dan Brazel, 9172 Lay Road, Houston, Texas, FCC Director of Collection Services. So we've been after this process for quite some time, and obviously, all of us have had a lot of conversations throughout that process. And really, I reflect back on the earlier stages of this. I know, you know, our team spent countless efforts coming to the City of Omaha to ensure we were analyzing the city properly and to provide the proper resources and routes needed for the city. When you look at our proposal, you know, we boast 59 routes, which we feel is the proper number to adequately service the City of Omaha, providing residents with the service they expect. So currently, we operate in Texas and Florida. You know, a comment has come up in the past that we're a Spanish-based company, and, you know, a lot of comments about Spain. Now, that is true. However, what we have done over the last year and what we're working on is, as we integrate into the U.S., we have formed two U.S. companies, both in Texas and Florida. And if we're fortunate enough to receive the award for Omaha, we would be forming FCC Environmental of Nebraska, which you would headquarter out of Omaha. So really, for us, this is, you know, obviously, a desirable contract, but really would be a pivotal point for us in the Midwest to build upon future operations, on future customer in the future. Several months ago, we provided a proposal to Public Works outlining our plan to provide to the city the means in which we could help recycle and have a sustainable solution for removing the current personal containers that are on the street with the residents. Obviously, as the containers, the new ninety-six gallon carts come in, there's not exactly room for the old containers. The estimate is probably there's four to five hundred thousand personal containers in place currently in the city. We have a solution for that through experience and a vendor partnership where we can provide at no cost to the city, allowing a sustainable solution to help recycle those materials and ultimately help the city out. I've spent the last three months roughly working with Waste Management. You know, I have a relationship relating back, but for me and for our company, we know that the transition is vital. And obviously, we don't have the award and obviously that's up in the air, but we know that starting early on that is key for us. So our goal as FCC, and if we're fortunate enough to obtain this contract, is to transition as many employees as we possibly can from Waste Management. So I've had extensive conversations with local leadership as well as senior leadership overseeing this current contract to express our interest in that partnership and a smooth transition for everyone, including the residents of Omaha, to focus on that staffing piece, as we know that's a pivotal key component to this contract. Lastly, I'm, you know, I'm in front of you today as the Director of Collection Services for FCC. We've all had a long journey together and I'm here asking for your, for your support with the proposal that's in front of you from the mayor and endorsed by Public Works and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And you'll be around for questions.
I will. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up is Danny Stanton.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and council members. My name is Laura Hubbard, eight forty, one forty-five Glenwood Valley Drive, Harmony, North Carolina. I'm Director of Municipal Sales for Toter. We're a cart manufacturing company that has provided millions of carts across the U.S. for over fifty years now. There's two keys to a really successful collection contract. The first is service, and we're confident that FCC is going to be able to provide you guys in the City of Omaha with the service level that they need. We have seen FCC approach the service levels, and we know that in a startup such as this, they're going to handle that in a way that is, is planning, as Dan mentioned, they're going to go in. They've worked with us extensively on this project. We're currently working with them on a project in Florida right now in Palm Beach for a hundred and ten thousand homes. And we know that they're going to provide that level of service that the residents of Omaha needs. The second is quality equipment. Carts are the one item residents touch daily. If there are issues with the carts, the city's going to hear about it. Ultimately, the contractor's going to be responsible for fixing those issues. But you're still going to hear about it because your residents are going to be complaining. You're still going to hear those complaints. So it's really vital that you have a good product out there in the streets. Toter is the only cart manufacturer that proposed a fifteen-year body warranty and a twelve-year warranty on all the other components. Our carts are one hundred percent recyclable at the end of their useful life and manufactured using up to fifty percent recycled content, which is the highest amount of recycled content proposed by any cart vendor to the City of Omaha. The city has chosen black for the cart bodies, which is also lends itself to be the most amount of recycled content that can be used. And the amount of recycled content in our carts that would be provided to the City of Omaha have selected would not compromise the integrity, durability, service life, or the warranty of the carts. Because FCC has selected Toter as a cart vendor, the large ninety-six gallon, as well as the small forty-eight gallon, would come from the same manufacturer. That would give uniformity and a nice, clean, consistent look on the curb. You can be assured that FCC is investing for the residents of Omaha to ensure that they have a cart that is easy to use, safe, and will provide lasting benefits for fifteen to twenty-plus years. Thank you.
Danny Stanton. Or Donnie, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the City Council. My name is Donnie Stanton, and I live at twenty-three oh two South One Seventy-Eighth Street in Omaha. And I've been, I have a transportation and logistics background with about twenty-six years' experience, mostly in transportation. And I've been following this contract and going back and forth for a few months, looking at this as a resident. And looking, reading the articles in the World Herald, watching some of the city council meetings as well, what I've learned from these articles is that each company has proposed their bids based on the number of homes collected per truck. It appears from my analysis that Waste Management, Waste Connections, and FCC Environmental were pretty much in line with each other, claiming that each truck can collect roughly seven hundred homes per day per truck. West Central Sanitation, however, claims that they can collect over a thousand homes per day per truck, if my analysis was correct. I know from personal experience in this industry that putting that much more work on a truck will result in poor service, which ultimately impacts the residents of Omaha. The facts, based on my analysis, FCC Environmental states that they will street fifty-nine trucks per day, as stated earlier today, and will collect roughly six hundred and seventy-four homes per day per truck. West Central, I'm sorry, Omaha's current contractor, Waste Management, collects roughly seven hundred and sixty-three homes per day per truck. And Waste Connections came in stating they would collect seven hundred and seven homes per day per truck. West Central Sanitation claims that they will street forty trucks a day and will collect a thousand and seventy-four homes per day per truck. As a resident of Omaha, I personally like the two cart plan that allows for unlimited seasonal yard waste versus the three cart plan. As we all know, yard waste is really heavy in the spring and fall months. That's where the bulk of our yard waste comes from, which means that a resident such as myself would not have to find a place to put this third ninety-six gallon cart for just, in my garage or wherever it may be, for just those times of the year. The other issue I see with the three cart plan is that any excess yard waste that I would generate and would not fit into this three cart plan would require me, if I'm not mistaken, to purchase, purchase a sticker at the cost of two dollars per bag to be removed from my property. The seasonal unlimited option affords me, a resident, the opportunity to get rid of all my yard waste when it's needed without having to purchase stickers for additional bags. Again, from the articles that I have read and the analysis that I have performed, FCC has the experience in many other similar-sized cities to Omaha, and West Central Sanitation's largest city is Mankato, Minnesota. The number of homes in Mankato is approximately the size of one council district in Omaha, or if my analysis is correct, roughly twenty thousand homes. West Central, in my opinion, would have to double in size to support this contract, and the residents of Omaha are not willing or should not be willing to take that risk when it comes to the service of their trash. We have been experiencing these service delays enough with our current waste contractor. To me, FCC Environmental seems to have the required experience and resources to be successful in a city the size of Omaha.
Thank you, Donnie.
Thank you.
Tim Teetz. And that's the last proponent who's signed in. If there, if you wish to testify as a proponent, last chance to sign in with the clerk right over here to my right.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Teetz, one-seven-two-five-nine Pine Street. As a resident, I want a consistent and simple, straightforward waste program. I do not want trash, I don't want, do not want Trash Day to make my neighborhood look messy and unruly like it does today with multiple types of trash cans, bins, and bags strewn everywhere on the street. I'm here to support the FCC two cart plan with the unlimited seasonal waste because that is the one I feel has the best chance to succeed in giving Omaha a regular and consistent waste collection program without the confusing sticker program or an extra cart. I've worked for and with many companies throughout the Midwest focusing on the efficient flow of material through transportation, logistics, and distribution operations. I've been trained and certified in lean manufacturing and Six Sigma practices and procedures. The training focuses on real-life metrics that tell the true story of efficiency. The reason I'm speaking today is that from what I've read and analyzed, the discussion, in the discussion about this bid, a big red flag jumped out at me, and the number of trucks to support the Omaha bid. Waste Management at seven sixty-three, Waste Connections at seven oh seven, FCC at six seventy-four, and West Central at one thousand seventy-four. If there was evidence of this type of efficiency in cities the size of Omaha, I would be extremely impressed. But since West Central's largest city is Mankato, it begs the question if they're truly prepared for the volume they are trying to be more than fifty percent more efficient at than the companies who have experience in cities this size. I do not think it is wise for the city to take on a substantial risk on a ten-year contract for an unproven entity. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more proponent. If you tell me your name, you can sign later.
Beau Sullivan.
Beau Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan. And your address, too.
You bet. Thanks, Mr. President and council members. Beau Sullivan with Reherd Pacific, seventy-eight hundred One Hundred Street, Pleasant Prairie, Wisconsin. And so, a little bit about Reherd, who we are, what we do, how we've partnered with FCC across the country, not only in Texas rollouts, as well as Florida, from not only a cart and technology standpoint, but having that from a seamless project of a one-stop shop. So Reherd Pacific, going on a hundred and six years, being in business, is a family-owned and operated. So started with the wooden milk crate, evolved to injection molded plastics. Cool story. We were Pepsi's Vendor of the Year in two thousand and eleven. So we helped them decrease their operational costs of having a pallet drop at a gas station, have to unload it, take it in. So from safety, operational times, we helped them save over ten million dollars operationally. So that's where, proponent of FCC, of the partnership we've had with them, however that looks in this project, that their support and what's unique with us is we have seven different manufacturing facilities. So when you talk about a project of three hundred thousand, potentially four hundred and fifty thousand, it's critical. If a machine goes down, you have other places to pull from. It's really cool that we have one less than two hundred miles away from you guys down in DeSoto, Kansas. So kind of a cool story from how we can recycle, products go back in that, and it's locally produced to you guys. Also...
And if you could, I don't quite understand what you're saying your company does.
Cartson Technology Solution Base. So example I was going to highlight is City of L.A. in Toronto. We provide carts. So we actually had a ten-year contract with City of L.A. and Toronto. L.A. just got extended for another ten years, and Toronto was extended last year for another ten years, and that's gone beyond just, just the carts. City of Toronto would perform all the cart maintenance for them. So just a little highlight of what we've done and how we have endorsed FCC in the past.
And you're, in addition to the Totes?
Correct.
Ms. Hubbard's?
Yep. So giving the city visibility into the service verification, so when those carts get dumped, and then also from a work order because it's critical. And your situation, the city having the capital expenditure for the assets, and how can you reduce that over time, and having that visibility of those assets getting moved? So that way down the line, when you do have warranties, you have visibility not into the warranty process, but then understanding if you guys have to pay for future carts, making sure that's getting managed in a proper way and you have that visibility.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Please.
Yeah, it's Reherig, R-E-H-R-I-G, in the Pacific.
Just like the ocean.
You got it.
Or the street.
Yep. That's right.
All right. Well, thank you for coming.
Any questions?
In your testimony. You'll be around if anyone has questions?
Absolutely. And other thing I highlighted that was pretty cool was out of the four people that submitted, we're part of three out of the four.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move to the opponents who signed in and begin with Don Williamson. Welcome back, Mr. Williamson.
Mr. President, can I submit comments to the city clerk?
Of course. If anyone has statements, by the way, that you brought with you that are prepared, you can always hand them to the clerk and they'll be a part of the record.
Mr. President and City Council of Omaha, once again, we appreciate having been part of this process almost from the beginning. And I've enjoyed discussions I've had with many of you and the opportunity to meet you personally. We've been humbled to have this chance, and it's kind of a chance of a lifetime for our company, so we do appreciate it a lot. We've put a lot of effort and intention into our proposals for Omaha, and we know that we can be successful in them. Our reputation is our most prized and hardest-earned asset, and we protect it and keep it unblemished, and we will continue to do that. We've worked hard to demonstrate that our proposal is viable, and we've gone to the effort of showing you and trying to demonstrate to you how we can do that. Our proposal was also vetted by HDR Engineering as an act of the city to do that, and we appreciate that effort that the city council and the city took to, and Public Works, to prove our plan. HDR did find us to be, to be able to have a plan that was successful. They did not find anything that said we would fail. And so we appreciated that evaluation. We've also provided letters from our banks to assure the finances that were necessary to provide all the assets and the real estate necessary to provide for the contract for the City of Omaha. We submitted bonding sureties from two separate surety companies, and they don't issue those assurances lightly. They have a vested interest in our success in the City of Omaha. Before we submitted our proposal, we took the time and the effort to come to your community, spent many weeks here and time. And I was on some of those trips along with Ray and Taylor, and we had other operational people work with us. We took the time to go through the troublesome alleys, they're called troublesome or tricky, through on-street parking areas, and we went through with, with actual measuring devices to make sure that our plan would succeed before we submitted it to the city. We have full confidence that our plans will work and will work to our expectations. We even went to the trouble and, I shouldn't say the trouble, but we took the opportunity to bring carts to town, and we worked with Reherd Pacific to bring carts to the community. And we spent a day on July the eleventh, which some city council members were able to fit into their schedule. We appreciate that. And we tried to demonstrate how our equipment, the types that we have specified for the city, would work in alleys that are difficult. These alleys and these sites were picked by the Public Works Department as typical venues that we would, that we would see in our operational plan in Omaha. And we showed, I believe, and demonstrated that we could do that with the type of equipment we specified. We're not the lowest bid because we're cheap or because we're ignorant of what it takes to service the City of Omaha. We are celebrating our fortieth year of a growing company every year, and it is our specialty to come into cities that have trouble with the solid waste plan, and we succeed in every one we've ever done. And we would do the same for you. We are the lowest bid because we've been intentionally different in our approach. We've intentionally utilized more technology and more automation. It's not technology or automation that we're unfamiliar with. It's technology and automation that we currently use in our operation every day, and we have many years in our track record of using it. It's not new for us. We believe that our bid was the most responsive to the initial RFB. If one were to look at the conditions and the projections of the RFB, we believe our bid and know our bid most closely reflects what was anticipated in that bid. We've provided the most efficient and most automated method of collection available for the City of Omaha. Our method would be safer for drivers and would bring a better environment for the drivers and operators every day than to what they currently experience in the current conditions with which they're asked to perform for the City of Omaha in the current, in the current method of collection. It's important that whatever contract the City of Omaha takes up and enters into, that it provides the kind of conditions that are going to keep drivers happy and operators being able to work at their top efficiency and to come home every day satisfied, not only that they got a job done and made a paycheck, but they made the city happy and satisfied. If there's anything that drives a man or a woman every day to succeed, it's to know that they can put forth their best effort and come home at night feeling good about the job they've done. And that's the kind of company we've built, and that's the kind of company we would propose to build in Omaha. Our bids have been consistent in their pricing. We believe that our three cart, one A option for yard waste, as originally contemplated by the RFB issued by the Public Works Department, is the best option for yard waste collection in the City of Omaha. It includes permanent assets and personnel, not seasonal or not rented, not temporary workers, but permanent year-round. We think we see the importance of that today because it's very hard to get a CDL driver number one. It's almost impossible to get a CDL driver to work for you for six weeks of the year. They're looking for permanent work, and they're looking for a place where they can put down roots. Our yard waste proposals are permanent workers, permanent assets, not a rented fleet. We offer thirty-five weeks of separated yard waste service, not just eight weeks or twelve weeks a year. And I'm sure if you did an assessment of people around Omaha, you would find that they're producing yard waste even in the middle of July or the middle of August, as they trim their bushes or a storm comes through and there's yard waste that comes down. Our proposal also is a guaranteed ten-year that reflects the original, the contract with trash and recycling collection. It's a ten- It's a 10-year guaranteed yard waste service, not just a five-year guarantee that is the current supplemental yard waste proposal that will be before the council coming up. I don't know if this overhead is working or not.
They'll turn it on for you.
Would they please?
Give it a second.
And...
It'll come on.
I should have probably asked for that. And there's one thing that has come up as we've reviewed the supplemental yard waste plan, and I don't know if I can get that quiet screen for you, but let me try to move it for you. And what I did is just showing you that the new supplemental yard waste plan anticipates the use of yard waste bags that are compostable. They're a very good product. We've used them in the past, there's nothing wrong with them. They are compostable, but there's one thing that needs to be recognized by the city council as they anticipate moving to a supplemental yard waste plan. The use of that plan, unlimited or whether it be 10 or 20 bags, anticipates the use of these bags. And these bags, they said, are very functional, are very good, but there is a cost to them. The cheapest ones I can find in the city of Omaha are about 45 cents a piece, and I just want to let the city know that the use of the third yard waste cart per year, over a 35-week period, would save the residents of Omaha nearly $7 million a year, or roughly $47 per household each year, just in unneeded packaging costs. These yard waste bags are good, but they are a package. They are something we don't reuse, it is compostable, but it is an expense, it takes resources to make them. Carts do, too, but frankly, carts have a life of sometimes 20 and 30 years. We know, because we've had carts for over 30 years that are still in service today. And if we were to work out the financial formula for that, you'd find that the carts would be much cheaper for the environment and the resources for using them than these yard waste bags. But I do think that this is something that the city needs to anticipate and think about when they talk about what type of yard waste plan or collection plan you're going to use and enter into. West Central Sanitation also saves the city of Omaha $2 million a year, not counting this yard waste expense by the city residents. But just in our plan is we save the city $2 million per year, which is $20 million over the life of the contract. That $20 million is more than the city of Omaha pays for one year with your current vendor waste management. That's a recognizable savings, and I think it's important with the needs of the city budget. It's important that the assets for collecting yard waste in Omaha be owned and be permanent. This is important, and this is what's part of our three-cart option one-A provides. For a city the size of Omaha, it's too risky to accept anything less. We've discussed the city's yard waste needs with individuals of both DEF and BAW and with Waste Management. We, being in the business as long as we have, and some of our other staff and personnel have worked with people from those companies in the past, we had people there that have worked with the city of Omaha, and they told us what the needs were for these contracts. We're confident what we've proposed is more than adequate. In summary, West Central Sanitation is the only bidder whose operational plan has been independently vetted by an independent engineering firm, HDR. West Central Sanitation is the only bidder who's provided the financial assurances above and beyond what was requested in the bid documents. West Central Sanitation is the only bidder to have physically demonstrated our proposal in Omaha's streets and alleys with real trucks. And we also continue to be the lowest bid. We believe we've gone above and beyond in our efforts. If chosen to service Omaha, the effort we have put forth in pursuit of this contract is the same effort you can expect from us and from me personally every day. We would provide the service the city expects, and we would satisfy the problems that you've had recently. Thank you, Mr. President and City Council.
Thank you. Next opponent is Spencer McGruder, followed by Stephen Italis. Again, if you wish to speak as an opponent and have not signed in yet, there's a sign-in process today. You can sign in with a clerk.
Spencer McGruder, 1524 Cummins. I stand here today as a taxpayer and a safeguard to the integrity of this procurement process. The integrity of this procurement process is codified by municipal code of ordinances in the Home Rule Charter. My problem is that, and I've written three letters to the council regarding this, when you look at the, when you go to the Code of Ordinances, it clearly states that...
Do you want the light on?
It clearly states that all bid proposed contracts...
Light that up a little bit so we can read it. Okay.
The ordinance section is 10-105, and it refers to the bidding process, okay? And that first sentence, it refers to Section 5.6 of the Code of Ordinances, I mean, of the Home Rule Charter. In that Home Rule Charter, it sets out policies and procedures for the purchasing department. And in those procedures, it states that the bids are to be open public, in public, and be the basis for award, okay? That last phrase, be the basis for award, is at the heart of what my concern is. When you look at the bid tabulation from when the bids were open in public, the purchasing department recorded the prices, and for FCC, they recorded a price for Option D or Package D of $40 per yard waste sticker, okay? When the transmittal letter from this administration to this body comes, that $40 per yard waste sticker is now $1.98 per sticker. On the draft ordinance that you're going to be voting on, it's $1.98 per sticker. My question is, how do you have a procurement process that cannot, can avoid being challenged in a court of law or by another bidder that didn't have the same opportunity that FCC had to change their bid? Because that's what happened. After the bid, somehow it went from $40 a yard waste sticker to $1.98. And per our Home Rule Charter, it says that the bid that was open in public is the basis for award. So, that's my question.
Thank you.
I would like an answer to that if you could.
Thank you. Mr. Italis, you're up next, and followed by Larry Stor.
Stephen Italis. I live at 1018 South 36th Street. I am a former biology teacher, a former county board member, and trustee of a small village, and been involved with solid waste for 50 years. And I'm not here as an opponent, I'm here as a proponent for the low bid. That's what we worked on in Winnebago County, Northern Illinois, and if the bidders were bona fide, we went with the low bid. It seemed the American way, but maybe not the Spanish way. It would seem that from the communications in the paper that the mayor has already made up her mind. The 20-year reference is even beyond the reasonable 10-year reference, which is much longer than should be considered with the rapidly changing markets for recyclables and the need for proper recycling. The recycling program as we know it has run its course, it is dead. The CEO of our recycling program is asking for more money. It is not making money, it won't make money. If you want to remove the most valuable components from the waste stream, put on a bottle bill. That'll get the cans and bottles out. But the inclusion of yard waste and fiber, cardboard, paper in a landfill is actually a positive component. It stabilizes the landfill. And if you want to know what to do with the land afterwards, put a solar farm on top of it. It isn't good to build on. County Stadium in Milwaukee was built on a dump, and they had to tear it down. But there are uses for open land, and I would suggest that, at the least, cut a contract with a five-year limit so that you can get a second chance and do it right. I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stor, followed by Luis Jimenez.
Do I have to repeat my name again?
Yes.
Larry Stor, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I live in the 68132 area. There are some older homes, some larger homes, some smaller homes, some homes on hills, some homes with alleys. There are some younger people, there are some older people. I, myself, don't look forward to a 96-gallon. Now, two of them and probably three. Carts? My property is not going to handle that. Are you going to fine me for leaving carts out on the front of your lawn? I can't handle that, particularly on a snowy, icy day. Are you going to reject my claims for injuries when I fall on the ice trying to move a 96-gallon cart? How about my neighbor that's 93 years old? How about some of the kids that are helping parents that are injured or incapable? Are you going to deny those claims like we do with potholes? Because you're surely going to have them. Some people are just going to not do it. So, are you going to take their property because they didn't comply with the city ordinance? Is that part of a redevelopment plan, maybe, for East Omaha? Could be. We need to ask some of those questions. Chicken Leckens said the sky was falling, and the Road Runner never could catch, the fox could never catch the Road Runner. But they kept coming up with all these schemes from the Acme Toy Company. And, I mean, you know, why don't you have three of those carts sitting out here so people can see how large those are? And then imagine it being filled with yard waste. I don't think so. Not when I'm maybe 80 years old, not when I'm probably only two years older than now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jimenez, followed by Kathy Jeffers.
Luis Jimenez, 2205 North 24th Street. Good day, council members. Residents want their trashed picked up, but now they also care what happens next. So, I appreciate the hard work conducted to get to where the contract is today with And the process has been good. There's been a lot of discussions from different individuals coming together to have those discussions, I believe. But even though the contract is provided by the mayor's office today here, it is city council property. Once approved and implemented, I'm not convinced you're going to take responsibility for the service. Thank you.
Kathy Jeffers, followed by David Corbin, Sierra Club.
Kathy Jeffers, 5706 South 173rd Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President, as well as the council members for listening to us. I am speaking for Omaha Together, One Community Environmental Sustainability Team. We have again been asked whether we want to continue to separate yard waste to produce Omagrow despite the known additional costs. OTAC, from the beginning, over two years ago, supported separating garbage from yard waste to be placed in a covered container and to be processed at the Omagrow composting facility. It will prolong the usefulness of a limited amount of space in the landfill. As a master gardener for the University of Nebraska Extension Program, I teach people to use integrated pest management practices, such as amending their clay soil in a regenerative way to build healthy soils with this compost. The overwhelming public voice was spoken on April 23rd at your city council meeting, and a large support wanted the continuation of composting yard waste, and that's why we're here today to reiterate our program. Let's not be short-sighted at the 10-year garbage contract with composting. Let's not be short-sighted, but look at the new 10-year garbage contract with composting yard waste as well as recycling biweekly as part of the big-picture solution for helping our city be a leader for other cities to follow. Thank you for your time and selecting this solid waste contract that will be the best for Omaha, for us, and future generations.
Thank you. Mr. Corbin. Mr. Sullivan, did you want to speak on this one, too? As you're with both companies, I presume?
Yeah.
Okay. You'll be next.
David Corbin, 1002 North 39th Street. I'm the chair of the Nebraska Sierra Club. Also, retired public health professor for UNO and also teach at Creighton. My main reason for being here today on behalf of the Sierra Club is our concern for methane in the landfill. The more organic materials you put in there, the more methane is released into the atmosphere. It's a potent greenhouse gas. The American Public Health Association, who I've represented Nebraska there for over two decades, puts climate crisis at the top of their priorities. Young people, in a Yale study, 70% of adults 18 or younger say they're worried about global warming compared to only 56% of those 55-plus. There's a group called Republican, which basically puts climate change on their top priority. This is Republicans who are young Republicans who are talking about facing the issues of the climate crisis. Recently was announced a Blueprint Nebraska to try to entice 43,000 young people to come to Nebraska to live and work. In that, they do not mention anything about the youth. There is something about transportation, there's nothing about the fact that young people want to live in a sustainable community. We must have the three carts. The longer you can have the yard waste collected, the better it is for the environment. The one thing, I know that there's something in the contracts about education, and you talked about it at length when we were talking about the plastic bag ban, about the need for education. I hope, whatever you decide, that part of that education is talking about what is going to be the climate in the next 10, 20 years, and this is a long contract. If you think that you can capture most of that, that is not true. Yes, you can capture it, and you can create energy like OPPD is doing right now, I just came from their meeting today, but the majority of it does not get captured, the majority of it goes into the atmosphere. It's a potent greenhouse gas. I'm not here to speak on favoring one company over the other, but favoring a three-cart system, and the longer you can collect that yard waste separately, the better.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin. Mr. Sullivan, followed by Mary Ruth Stegman.
Again, Beau Sullivan with Reherd Pacific. Again, proponent for West Central, so as President alluded to, we're in support of both companies, so just want to reiterate our support for them as we've partnered with them for over 20 years. And again, Reherd's the only company that can be a one-stop shop from production, delivery, and technology all under our roof. And just wanted to highlight, our goal is to help you guys maximize your return on invested capital, help the hauler decrease their operational costs, you know, end their day, make sure the residents of Omaha have a smooth transition, as we know a lot of us are watching this project.
Thank you. Mary Ruth Stegman, followed by Alan Vavoka.
President Jaren and city council members, my name is Mary Ruth Stegman, and I live at 4512 Pierce Street. I have communicated with you before about the solid waste contract. I understand that today you will vote for one of the four bids from FCC or West Central Sanitation. I understand that today you will vote for one of the four bids from FCC or West Central Sanitation. It is unclear how the mayor's plan for the number of weeks of unlimited yard waste collection coordinates with these bids. It is also unclear whether there will be 12, eight, or some smaller number of weeks of unlimited yard waste collection. I will just reiterate our position that we oppose any yard waste being sent to the landfill. In a June 11, 2019 letter to you, Mayor Stotter wrote, quote, "A primary reason to offer separate collection is to produce Omagro," unquote. OTOC's position is that the primary reason for separate collection is to reduce methane produced by decomposing yard waste from the landfill. Methane in the first 20 years is 72 times better than carbon dioxide at infrared heat retention. And it is heat retention in the atmosphere and oceans that is significantly contributing to the climate change that we are all now experiencing. While it is true that methane collection system to produce electricity at Pheasant Hill landfill, much of the methane is not collected. And we understand that there are no plans or funds to expand this methane collection system in view of the greatly increased amount of methane that will be produced if yard waste is deposited in the landfill as it now is for the next 10 or 20 years. OTOC's Environmental Sustainability Action Team urges you to select a solid waste contract that does not send yard waste to the landfill. And I also would like to thank you for all the time and effort that you have spent in considering this next solid waste contract.
Thank you. Mr. Vavoka, followed by what is currently our last registered opponent, Mr. Michael O'Hara. So if you are an opponent and wish to speak and have not signed in, last chance to do so.
Alan Vavoka, 3719 Hamilton. It strikes me as inappropriate that a city the size of Omaha should even consider not having a recycling program and a yard waste program. It's very short-sighted. If you decide to be that short-sighted, my suggestion would be to agree with the suggestion that the contract terms should be shortened because this is not a forward-looking approach to dump yard waste in the landfill and possibly to throw the recyclables in there with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Hara, followed by our last speaker, Mr. Fannen Steele.
Hello, Michael O'Hara from Nebraska Chapter of the Sierra Club, 6035 Binning Street. Public health and safety is one of your most important duties. In fact, it might very well be the most important. It is so important, it contains a rare statutory mandate. You shall pick up all yard waste. You shall pick up all solid waste within the city and do so without a fee other than the property tax and the general fund. Public health is extremely complex. You're dealing with both the immediate and the future. And we would, the Sierra Club, prefer to have the three bins. We're agnostic as to which person is going to pick them up. We're more interested in how you pick up the garbage and what you do with it. We want to have composting of the yard waste to reduce methane. And that also is the state policy that you compost yard waste as opposed to put it in the landfill. With respect to recycling, China is no longer taking our garbage because it is contaminated. If you use two bins, you're going to increase the frequency of contamination of that recycling bin and that is going to increase the cost of recycling for you. As mentioned in today's paper, the tipping fee requested is at $100. And if you look at the county's tipping fees, they vary. But the more complex the material you're taking, the higher the tipping fee. If you would like to reduce that tipping fee, go to three bins as opposed to two. We'd really urge you to sort that. You are stewards of the public dollars and I would hope you to remember that taxes are the price we pay for society and you do not want to go on the cheap when you're buying safety and health. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Mr. Fannen Steele, and we had one more opponent sign in, Jeffrey Pecorni. You'll be next.
Hello, TJ Fannen Steele, 5006 South 167 Avenue. I'm here on behalf of Students for Sustainability. I'm here to express our concern with the terms of the proposed contract with FCC. It isn't too often that you hear a sustainability advocate argue on behalf of convenience. But under these circumstances, it is essential to maintain the benefits of year-round yard waste pickup and avoid the consequences of illegal dumping. Under the proposed contract, solid waste collection contract, Omahans will no longer be able to utilize the luxury of year-round yard waste pickup. It is true that Omaha sees the majority of its yard waste collections during the seasons of spring and fall, as would any other city. However, it would be false to say that the amount of yard waste collected during the remaining seasons isn't enough to necessitate year-round collections. Just not too long ago, I was woken up at 4:00 a.m. on Super Bowl Sunday by the sound of a 30-year-old tree crashing on top of our driveway. And by 8:00 a.m., we had 17 bags ready for the Monday pickup. And with this proposed contract, we would have to find a different way to dispose of those 17 bags. This is an experience shared by many people that I've dealt with on Nebraska winters and furthermore have not been forced to find other means of disposing this substantial amount of yard waste produced during the winter months. And I would like to reiterate what Mr. Corbin of Sierra Club said about the methane gas emissions with disposing of the yard waste bags at the landfill. It is not an efficient way to, there's no efficient way to capture the methane gas and use for energy and it's much more efficient to just use of composting. On another note, this contract also includes arrangements for biweekly collections of recyclables that will in turn be delivered to First Star Recycling. I hope you guys are all well-versed with the current issues surrounding the recycling in Omaha. And I'll refer to the fact that if the current contract is not renegotiated, recycling services will end and all recyclables will inevitably be sent to the landfill. I hate to say that by the looks of it, there's a strong likelihood that this will in fact happen. And in that circumstance, we will be paying FCC services that will no longer be able to be fulfilled. So we need guarantees with what will be happening with the recycling system in Omaha before we make the final decision on this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pecorni.
Jeffrey Pecorni, 4969 South, 149th Court. I've been a participant in almost every garbage disposal system known to man. From my five-year-old experience with Jack Sekman in Skyler, Nebraska, he would give me a ride over to my friend's house to the Army in Vietnam when they burned everything, to Omaha's system. And now I'm here as a 76-year-old representing my six grandchildren, aged 10 to 20. What you do today, I probably won't outlive. You're going to, this system, 10 years, 12 years, 15 years, and I'll probably be gone. But my grandchildren might say, what did you do at my funeral? What did you do to challenge you folks? You're in an interesting situation here. And I'm not so much a proponent for or against whatever you're doing, except for the fact, a little bit of a critting. You've got HDR, and I'm a little biased because my son-in-law works for them. But you should go to them and say, what's the perfect system for the city of Omaha? And not say, here's what we've done in the past. This is what we need to do in the future to ensure the quality of our life today, 10 years, 20 years, and 100 years down the line. You need to, there should not be really any garbage. When everything starts off as something that's pure and unique, whether it's food or metal or whatever. ABCs should not be permitted in the waste stream. Lumen beverage cans should not be permitted in the waste stream. And I don't know how you stop that. It's just like there's a 75 mile speed limit on the interstate. Not everybody obeys it, 1%, 2%, 3%, 5%. And if you pass a law against ABCs into the waste stream, maybe 5% of the people would still throw them in there. But you'd get 95% or 90% of the cans, which is the most valuable product that First Here recycles now. It almost would pay for the system. I'm a student of my garbage in my neighborhood. I walk the streets every Monday morning when they pick it up. Pearly Sanitation does it. And I see things put out that amaze me, that are perfectly good. And I hear the garbage man picking up the sacks and there's aluminum cans in there, lots of them. If they can make a noise that I can hear, I'm hearing, again, I'm 76 years old and hearing impaired. But if I can hear those aluminum cans rolling around, it's a sin. It's a sin. And I challenge you folks to go back to the drawing board. I think you're premature today. Go to HDR and say, listen, what is the ideal situation? What is the best garbage collection system in the world, in the world? And say, this is what we're going to do. And it's pay me now or pay me later. It's going to save you money and it might save my grandchildren's lives. Instead of me, I'm past my due date, 76, probably four years or five years past the average. Folks live to be 89 and I hope to make it to that. But that's the outer limits. Those 20 to 10-year-old grandchildren are going to be here for 60 years, 70 years, if in fact they can survive. You heard the methane testimony today. It doesn't make sense. I don't generate any yard waste to the system. It all goes, if I have some clippings or whatever, throw them behind the flowers and in a month, they're dried up and gone. And that's the way it should be. Now, if somebody's really fastidious and has to get rid of their grass clippings, work with that system. Go to HDR and say, what do we do with those people that will not allow one grass clipping on their yard? But I'm not hearing that today. What I am hearing is that you're rejecting the low bid. And their proponent made a good presentation as far as I can see. I try and read everything in the world herald about waste collection and recycling. Recycling is more of my avocation than garbage. But I'm living in the garbage. I see what my neighbors throw away, perfectly good stuff. You've got to address that problem first, I would think, I would think. Am I hitting my 10 minutes yet?
Well, the only thing I'll repeat is something that's, I think... No, no need to repeat. Is life or death. Is life or death.
And the thing is, I don't know what the life expectancy average here is, but there's some young ones here. But you're not going to beat this problem. You've got to come up with a unique solution. And Omaha is the perfect incubator for it. If you didn't have the best engineering firm in the, maybe in the world, in the United States for sure, but in the world, HDR, and they're your consultants, you go to them and say, how do we get out of this mess? How do we do it?
Thank you, Mr. Pecorni.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Tyler, did you want a minute of rebuttal?
Thank you. Again, just to reiterate our support of FCC and the two-cart alternative. I would like to respond to Mr. McGruder on his point on the...
And if you could limit to that.
Sure, sure. On the FCC, what we had with that is we did not define the unit for that bid item. And it was a unit correction. The FCC bid on a larger type of basically yard waste collection vessel, okay? That was, we did not define the unit. When we went back to them and asked them if they would accept a bid price based on the unit that everyone else bid on, we adjusted it to that price that you all see there.
How did the others know the unit size?
It was an assumption on their part that it was that bag that we see on the streets. And it was an assumption on FCC's part that it was something else. And it was a fault on our part to not find that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Public hearing is closed. Council member Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I want to thank everyone for their testimony here today. I do appreciate it. It's a complicated issue and it's our largest public contract, so it's important we get this right. And with so many bids and different versions on the agenda, it is hard to unpack all the details here. But I want to take a chance to talk about a few of them today. And I do want to say that for us, a baseline is the effective and timely collection of trash from people's streets and curbsides. To me, that should be a given. But I agree wholly with the testimony today that we need to be thinking much more than just that. We should have the expectation that we're also having an effective environmental program that involves composting and recycling going forward. And so if you have that perspective, and I do, you're not naturally inclined to the two-cart options that are before us here because they co-mingle and that's not something I support. I've been very clear about that for several years now. I do want to say something about the council. I think but for the council's involvement, I don't think waste management would have been held to the standard of their contract, which was to separate yard waste or at least had the heat put on them for that. I don't think many of these bids would have included separate yard waste collection. And I don't think we'd have a supplemental bid before us today that deals with separate yard waste collection to consider. So I do think we've made some progress in terms of our position on that. Residents in my district are very concerned still though about capacity and composting and separate yard waste. We have a lot of that in my area. And so if you have that perspective, you prefer the three-cart options that we have before us here today, which also aren't perfect, but do better address those situations. And that's because they institutionalize separate yard waste collections and composting, not just in a separate contract. They can be 35 weeks long, not just eight or maybe 12 weeks. And that third cart can address capacity issues even in the off-season. And I would say the competing proposal to what's been recommended to us today does those things and it's still $2 million less than what's been recommended. So that's something we need to consider. But what I want to drill down into a little bit, Mr. Tyler, if you can come to the podium today, is the supplemental yard waste bid because without that, to me, the recommendation's a non-starter. And I know that that public hearing's not technically until the following week, but I don't think you can have a conversation about this without drilling down on that. And that's really the new item of information we've had in the last couple of weeks. So a few questions for you. Can you just confirm that the supplemental yard waste contract is only a five-year contract even though it has the ability to be extended?
That's correct.
And why was the decision made to make it five years versus 10 like the rest of the contract?
You know, I'll speak to why the other one's 10 and then I'll come back to why we made five for the other one. It's very, we do not like to enter into extremely long-term contracts except for if there we see an absolute need. And there was an absolute need for the larger solid waste contract to have that duration in it. And the reason is that if you have a company coming in from out of town that has to make a substantial investment, they need that long-term view. They need to know that if I have at least 10 years to recoup my funds. When we looked, we truly looked at the yard waste complement as a supplement to that larger contract. We saw it as a, we saw the five-year plus five-year as a long-term demonstration. That was the opinion of Public Works when we put together those bids.
Okay. And I'll talk about some of the terms of that contract. So from our conversation this morning, I know, should there be a non-performance on the yard waste supplemental contract? There is a $1.5 million bond a company would have to give up if they couldn't perform that work.
Yeah, so with both contracts, there's a performance bond equal to one year of the contract value. And if that contractor cannot perform that work, we'll go to their security company, who the bondholder, and we will tell them that they have to find someone to perform that contract.
And if it didn't go to that extreme, it was just they're missing some cleanups, some pickups like waste management has. There's also a fine system in place. Can you describe how that would work?
Sure. System fines liquidated damages based on number of complaints. If a number of complaints exceeds a certain number, and I don't have those exact formulas, but if the number of complaints exceeds a certain number, then you take, we have a formula that penalizes or has liquidated damages to that contractor for not performing the work. We also have the ability to recoup funds if our staff has to go out and complete that work for the contractor as well. That's in both contracts.
Okay. And then in terms of the contract itself, let's say a mayor and a contractor no longer wants to perform that work or just think it's too hard or too expensive or what have you. That supplemental contract could be dissolved by mutual agreement, right?
That, I'll say that supplemental contract, if the council desires for it to continue, we would have, we, Public Works, would have no intention of allowing it to not continue.
But in that instance, nothing would come to the council on that? That might be our opinion, but we wouldn't have a say over it?
I'd have to refer, excuse me, I'd have to refer that to law.
I believe that to be the case, which is concerning for me in terms of the permanency I'm seeking inside of an overall trash contract. Let's move on though to... Let's move on, though, to the supplemental contracts timeframe. So the contractor would have, be charged with picking up yard waste between eight and twelve weeks during the year. So that could be as few as eight weeks, which is essentially two months, which could be most likely April and October?
So, yeah, so we have the terms of the contract, I believe, and Jim, help me with this, if I get this incorrect. So between April and June in the spring, and between, is it September and November in the fall, through December. So at our discretion, and this will be a learning experience for us, you know, we're going to decide what period of time we're going to collect in the spring and fall. And we'll kind of make it like the current program we have with the neighborhood cleanup. You know, we decide every year, you know, what that will consist of. So we have, we have to give the contractor ninety days for them to be able to understand what that period will be, and then we'll decide. And that first year, we'll use six weeks, and we'll understand if that's the period of time that makes sense, or if there should be a lesser period of time, you know, four to six weeks. That's why we put that flexibility in there, so we can adapt that program over time, kind of right-size it based on how we see things over time. But we're gonna, it's one of these things to where we want to make sure, you know, the first time we never get it exactly right, we could put some flexibility into the length of the season and the timing of the season, too, for that contract.
And if it was the minimum time necessitated by the contract, which is eight weeks, is that a long enough period of time to sustain a composting program well into the future?
We believe it is.
Let's shift gears a little bit to the three-cart discussion. So in the three-cart option, the third cart presumably is for year-round yard waste. It's not unlimited, but it is year-round. In the off-season, like it is now, that third cart's still available and it still could be used to then co-mingle yard waste and our regular trash, right?
So in that off-season, that cart, if the residents so choose to set it out if they need capacity, that cart would be picked up, and everything in that cart would go to the landfill.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I want to call up also the company representatives, if I can, that I spoke to this morning. Maybe Dan first.
Mr. Brazil, come on down.
These aren't surprise questions to them, because I met with both of you this morning and asked you these very same questions, but I think it's important to kind of walk through these things some more. So there's a, there has been an observation out there on the supplemental yard waste bid, that yours was quite low compared to the other bid. And so there's been wonder of, was that just a lost leader in terms of getting the rest of the contract and securing that business? Wanted to give you a chance to address that.
Yeah, so if you look at our three-cart proposal versus our two-cart proposal, there is about a $5.5 million difference. So that was us budgeting for thirty-five weeks of yard waste, adding the additional trucks, people for those collections. When you look at our seasonal approach, we're at about 1.5 million, and it's budgeted for twelve weeks of work. So it very well falls in line with how we budgeted and how we priced our two-cart versus three-cart, which we believe, you know, keeps our pricing consistent. It's not a shot-in-the-dark number. It very much aligns with how we prior bid. The other thing I'd say to that is, we don't bid things to lose money. We can't do that. We wouldn't be in business if we did. So we feel very confident about our main bid, that we know we put adequate resources and adequate, you know, cost assumptions in that to make sure we turn a profit. And we did so the same way with our supplemental yard waste bid, to be confident that we can operate it for the city's needs, but also at a profitable rate.
And one of the ways you're doing that is with seasonal workers and drivers. And so I want to give you a chance to answer this question, too, because we've had sort of a bad experience with our current hauler in terms of not having enough, I think, drivers and seasonal workers and not, either not, either not having the ability or not being willing to bring in more resources nationally like they do have to address separate yard waste pickup throughout the city in recent years. And that's, I think, a major aspect of your bid. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so when we looked at the staffing needs of this supplemental bid and how we would address that, we first looked at, let's hire full-time employees for your own work. The challenge, in our opinion, is when you have twelve weeks of work, but try to hire someone for a full year-round job, now there's not enough work to go around for your people, and you can have frustration within your employees. So the approach we took is we said, okay, our main bid has fifty-nine routes, we have sixty drivers planned, plus ten swing drivers to cover vacations, sick time, adequate training to cover the city. We know that through proper operational planning and some resource shifts, we can absorb some of the supplemental contract with our current resources that are planned with the contract. The other piece, we'll have an estimated four hundred U.S. drivers in operation by the time this contract goes live. So we're looking at that, and I'm saying, I could, I could take five to eight employees from other locations that I help oversee and use them as a, as a resource for this contract. We have several people, we've already done some internal polling, that would love to be able to travel a little bit, not all the time, but that experience to go to another community, another site, and operate something like this. We would also look at subcontracting with local vendors. I know initially it sounded like there wasn't a lot of interest from local companies, potentially because of the size or quantity required. However, I think there's a very good opportunity for us to partner with some local haulers potentially, obviously, at their will, and we could supplement some of the routes that way. And then last is, you know, there are seasonal drivers, or temporary drivers, we'd call them. That would be our last resort, but is an option out in the workforce and something we could look at for this bid.
Okay. And then as one who is skeptical of a shorter-term supplemental bid as opposed to having yard waste collection within the main bid itself, what would you say to convince me of your commitment to picking up yard waste?
Well, I'll tell you that we view the supplemental bid tied to the main contract. It is no benefit to FCC, or quite frankly, the residents of Omaha, for us to bid on a yard waste bid that's separate and fail on it. We have, we hope to have a relationship with the City of Omaha through the main contract and obviously the supplemental one. And, you know, I've heard rumors that there's risk we may walk away from the contract or not perform it, but I'll tell you firsthand that if we ever failed on that contract or walked away from it, it would be very pressing and hard for us to ever obtain additional contracts. And as a company that's, you know, focuses on municipal collections and achieving future growth in the Midwest, if we're able to substantiate a site here, that is not an option for us. So it's fully dedicated, but again, it goes back to the fact that we priced that thing where we know we need to, to make money. It is not a loss to get into the main contract. We did not underbid it. We took a lot of time to study, analyze, and prepare to ensure we're profitable, to be able to sustain that work.
Okay. And my last question for now, and I'll ask this of both companies, is something that isn't really an operational question, but it's definitely going to be a concern to people, should we move to a cart system when they find out the carts are being delivered and they still have their five or ten garbage cans sitting there, and they'll be like, oh, my gosh, what do I do with these? That could be as many as 500,000 cans in our city, most of which are plastic, so a pretty big plastic issue that I care about. We talked this morning about how would FCC handle that in terms of potential drop-off sites, and a vendor who used it could recycle those. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, I personally have past experience with my last company, as well as FCC does in current contracts, that we have taken over in large cities where it has went from a personal container to a, you know, sixty-four, ninety-six gallon cart. The challenge is always, what happens to the residents' containers after they get the new carts, as you just alluded to. So through that partnership, what we proposed a couple of months ago to Public Works in a written letter is our plan to ensure the recycling and removal of those carts. So we already have the relationship in place. We've already, you know, started conversations around that to see what it would look like, but already have that company committed and able to help in that situation. So really, for us, we would take ownership of that, we would coordinate, and we would staff drop-site locations, probably majority of those being at our facility that we would end up having. The company would in turn provide the transportation, remove the carts, whether it's plastic, metal. Some older carts have some different materials they're made of, but then find the end market to recycle those, those products, and ultimately provide for a cleaner Omaha.
And that's outside the contracts and the bids here, but just something you're committing today that you would do?
Absolutely, yep. We committed a couple of months ago and wrote the letter.
And your vendor recycles those, doesn't just land them?
Absolutely, yeah, yep, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Don, if you would, too?
Mr. Williams.
President Jerem, Councilor Festerson?
Thank you. Your name and address, just for the...
Don Williamson, fourteen-twenty-three Ferry Colane, southwest, Wilmer, Minnesota.
Great, thanks. So a follow-up to our conversation this morning, too, I wanted to have, in a similar fashion, if there was a criticism of your supplemental bid, it would be, gosh, why was it so far off in terms of the price that was offered compared to FCC in this case? And some of the, some of the questions out there were, well, is this just them trying to supplement? The first bid, if that was underbid by any means or didn't have enough equipment, I wanted to give you a chance to address that.
Yes, sir, thank you. Councilor Festerson, on the supplemental yard waste bid, to get your mind around that, there are some things that change in it, and that one of them is an unlimited yard waste collection that the supplemental envisions. And an unlimited yard waste bid is truly what it says. It's unlimited. You don't know if you're going to come up with five bags or a hundred bags at a location. And we all know what our Midwest seasons are like. Spring may hit on one weekend, and it may hit hard and stay. And then if everyone gets busy in their yard work, you have to be able to provide the service that this bid envisioned and not have the mayor's hotline being called because the yard waste wasn't collected on the given week. So we poured the resources we felt we had to have to do that, and in our supplemental yard waste bid, it was thirty trucks and the associated staff, plus ten percent swing drivers, to staff those trucks. We were looking at that in the sense of that also, from our experience, we cannot find trained drivers to drive six weeks or four weeks in the spring and four weeks or six weeks in the fall. That is, that's, it's troubling to do and almost impossible for us to see happening. The other thing is, in the springtime, is when the CDL drivers or trained operators are at their peak of demand, and we know that the concrete companies are running, construction companies are hitting their stride, landscaping companies are starting to roll, and it's just a huge demand for the type of person that we need to operate these trucks in the spring, and we did not want to be under the gun, not having the people to supply the staff to do it. So to do it right, we felt we had to commit thirty trucks to do that seasonal yard waste plan. And also, in our training program, you can't just send a person out and say, okay, go to Dundee and pick up a thousand stops today, and he's never been on the route. It takes six weeks of training. At least six weeks of training, you turn a man loose in a three to four-hundred-thousand-dollar truck and expect him to go out there and operate safely and efficiently? You just can't take someone off the street and expect them to do that job. So we, by the time you take the six-week plan, add six weeks of training, you do that twice a year, our plan calls for permanent yard waste personnel and permanent drivers, operators, and permanent trucks. We did not feel we could satisfy what the City of Omaha demands. We've watched the newspapers for the past couple of years. We've seen the comments. We've seen the public comment on different types of social media. We were not going to fail.
Okay, thank you. And on your three-cart option, I guess just confirmation that that third cart is for yard waste, separate pickup, thirty-five weeks out of the year, but then is still available for co-mingling our trash in the off-season, right?
Councilor Festerson, yes, that's what the RFB required, as given to us by the city, and that's what we bid it to do, yes.
Okay. I want to give you a chance, two more questions. I want to give you a chance also to address my interest in, what do people do with their current cans, should the system change, and make sure they're handled in an environmentally responsible way?
Yep. We'd have to work with the city for education. As we know, education on a cart system would take a comprehensive education system, as I know Public Works is probably preparing for. But also, a plan envisioned to take care of those excess containers would be necessary. And it would need to be done in a phased-in plan, the same as the cart delivery would be phased in, because you're not going to phase in 150,000 residents getting all their carts delivered in one day or one week. It's going to be a plan of over a few months, maybe ninety days to 120 days, depending on how the Public Works would lay that out and work with our company. So the plan to pick up the carts, most of them are of plastic nature today, but there are still maybe some metal cans. Metal cans would stay in the Omaha vicinity and be recycled at a salvage yard, a metal reclamation yard, if there are still some metal ones out there. The plastic ones would go to a regrinder. A grinder is one that's going to chip that plastic, screen it, sort it, and then it's going to be used for drain tile and for exportable pallets. We work with Rare Pacific for recycling containers like that. They have partnerships with a grinder in Clinton, Iowa, and one in Missouri. We could use one of those two as a resource. As we do know, Councilor Festerson, and you've heard today from some of your citizens, and you know, dealing with your recycling contract, getting rid of recyclables right now, there's not a lot of value in that type of plastic in today's market. In fact, there's probably no value in it. So there would be transportation costs, and we did not offer that as a totally free option to the city. I'm going to be honest and tell the council that today, but we would certainly be a strong partner with you to get it done as cheap as possible. And if we could work with Public Works and some of their many yards around the town to have collection sites, that'd be the most reasonable way to get those off the street and get them recycled. But we would work with you with a plan that would succeed.
And I don't want to put you on the spot in terms of that, but I think it's important for folks to know potential costs that could entail. So I think FCC has committed no cost on that. Are you comfortable giving an estimate of what you think that could cost, the way you'd handle it?
Not knowing the distance that these products would have to travel to be recycled, because that's what the goal would be, to recycle them, hopefully they would be within a state away to get them recycled. I can't tell you exactly what it would be, because I'm not totally prepared for that, but I envision it could be up to $500,000, because you have transportation costs. We would do our best to make it lower.
Okay. And my final question for now, the, another question around being low bidder and low bidder by a lot was, gosh, can they really scale up and do this work this fast and perform the service everybody's going to want in demand, frankly? I wanted to give you a chance to address that head-on.
Sure. Thank you, Councilor Festerson. This is our fortieth anniversary, I told you that. We've been a growing company from day one, and we grow for a simple reason. Our customers are happy with us, and every customer's led us to a new customer. And we continue to have that same practice every day. Our company slogan is, "Good neighbors, you've come to trust," and we try to make that into our DNA of our company. And we do truly want to be good neighbors. To, as far as scope and ability to handle Omaha, we do Omaha every day now, but we do it in twenty-one counties in Midwest Minnesota. We cover 12,500 square miles every week in Minnesota. We service well over 150,000 customers every week in Minnesota. We do it out of five locations. We do it spring, summer, fall, and winter, and we've been doing it successfully for a long time. And I think of one thing I can tell you, with the thirty-six or thirty-seven letters of reference we gave you from all the municipalities and counties we serve with ongoing contracts, we still have every contract, every municipal city or county contract that has ever, we've ever been granted. Every relationship we've ever had with a municipal body of every size, they've continued to work with West Central Sanitation. We've not had one leave us. And if that's not a testimony to us keeping our promises, I don't have anything stronger to give you, Councilor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Festerson. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Councilman Festerson covered a broad range of questions I was going to ask you, so I'll be brief. I just had a couple of questions, follow-up questions, maybe on the, even though it's, we'll address this issue later about having the public hearing for the supplemental yard waste pickup. I did have a couple of questions I wanted to ask of the Law Department, if I could, Mr. Kratz. If, at the, at the end of the five-year initial term, would the, the ability to extend or exercise the option period be unilateral for both parties, or is it, how is that anticipated to be approved?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, it depends how it's written up. It can be written up in different ways sometimes. It's the...
Is there a draft? I'm sorry to interrupt.
If there is, I haven't seen it, so I can't tell you offhand. Usually, it's a mutual agreement that both would agree to extend it.
Okay, well, actually, the rest of my questions would then also pertain to the rest of that agreement, but as it relates to pricing and some other things. So if we don't have that in draft form right now, I guess I'll just wait till we see the draft of that to ask those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. There's no one else that wishes to be heard on the council. We would, the chair would entertain a motion on item thirty-four to postpone the third reading and vote to August twenty-seventh, a motion on item thirty-five to lay over the third reading and vote to August twenty-seventh, and then the clerk, when she reads up the non-action items, will hand up a motion on item fifty-three. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray, Harding?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Non-action items, items 36 through 53 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration. And then we have item 53, an ordinance to award the contract to FCC for OPW 53641 for yard waste collection, and I believe there is a motion to postpone the public hearing to the third reading and vote on August 27, 2018.
Nope, nope, no motion, I'm sure. No, no motion. Uh, is there a motion to lay over the public hearing and the vote on item 53 to August 27? Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, and we will stand in recess, uh, unless there's objection until 6:30, when we'll reconvene for public hearing on the 2020 recommended budget. So...